Additionally, each speaker must be recognized by the presiding board member prior to speaking. When recognized, each speaker must approach the podium and state their name and address before speaking. Unless otherwise specified, all testimony, evidence, and comments should be directed to the board chairperson or presiding board member. Please remember that it is expected that many will wish to speak about this case. Once speakers begin, if you agree with an argument already presented in favor or against, please practice the courtesy of indicating with a show of hands or a short statement of support rather than presenting the same argument again. Groups are also encouraged to send a representative to speak on their behalf. This will allow more citizens the opportunity to be heard. Each case will be presented to the board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, those who have signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak against or in support of the proposal. If needed, the board chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. After hearing from the public, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting procedures. At this time, the chair recognizes Mr. James Harris for our invocation.
That's great. Most Christ having followed, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity that we can assemble ourselves tonight for January 13th Rockingham County Planning Board Meeting. May the cases being presented be understood and accepted by the planning board. May the decisions and outcomes be understood by everyone. We ask these things in your precious name. Amen.
The next item on the agenda would appear to be the approval of the minutes.
I feel, Paul, just the minutes that are included in your packet, just call out those dates as you make the motion.
Okay, we have minutes for the August 12th, 2019 meeting and the December 9th, 2019 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve both those minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. The minutes are approved unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the... Amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance text for portions of the sign regulations.
We can ignore the order on the slide. We are... The text amendment is first on the agenda, so that's the procedure that we'll follow. There are several uses that are permitted in residential districts by right, such as schools and churches. There is sometimes a disconnect, however, when the residential district's sign ordinances are quite limiting, especially when it comes to one of those institutional uses. So this text amendment would allow for some room for churches and schools to increase the size of the sign just a little bit in order to be more in keeping with the expected size of those facilities and the expected size of the use in relation to the rest of the uses in a residential district, which are family residences. So, one... The reason I have so many different definitions there is because I know our ordinance right now just says for residential districts, no moving signs. And what I would like to do is allow moving signs for churches and schools as being a very commonly accepted practice today. But in order to avoid those that are animated with figures dancing or a display of fireworks and quite animated versus informational. Those definitions are intended to differentiate between them so that we can better regulate them. And it may be a little bit... I mean, I've got three different definitions. It's an abundance of caution right now before we revise our entire UDO to perhaps be able to have a more consolidated definition. But I'm familiar with these. These have been used in other ordinances. And I've used them myself successfully in order to say, no, that's an animated sign. You're only allowed to have a changeable copy sign. So those definitions are added. The other change is that on the... If you're on the staff report, page two of the staff report, section B, currently it reads, "Signs permitted in all..." Unless specifically permitted, signs shall not be artificially, and no sign inside districts shall contain any moving parts. This is all part of the signs in residential districts ordinance. So alternatively, the suggestion is to say, "All external illumination must be pointed downward, and signs shall not be animated or flashing in nature." The Part C is intended, honestly, to be able to cover advertising banners that are along fences of ballfields in schools. So this is intended to allow those signs inside a campus as long as they're directed... They're not directed to the road and to still prohibit advertising signs in the residential district. The last suggestion is to increase the size of the maximum copy area for a wall sign from 25 to 50 square feet per sign face. 25 on the side of a school or a church is awfully limiting. It's very, very limiting. So imagine a fairly new school that might be somewhere... Located somewhere south of the county that wants to put its moniker up on the wall, doesn't have any signage right now, and wants to have a changeable copy sign and their graphic up on the wall. Are there questions to me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Under Item C, I guess, are you saying that the advertising on the sign can only be directed to the inside of the ballfield and not the outside?
Correct. I feel that it would be unfair if the ballfield fence is right up against the road, for instance, to allow that fence, that sign, to advertise to the road, whereas another school's ballfield might be interior to a campus. And they... Nobody is supposed to be advertising for another firm from the school property. So that's intended to ensure that happens. And these are... You're familiar with the banners, right? They're usually for the raising of funds for school activities or sports. Yeah.
So those would be prohibited out facing the street?
Yeah. They need to face where they are... Their intent is for patrons of the... and attendees of the games to see them. Now, if you want to change that and, you know, an offer that they can be oriented to the road, that's your prerogative. If I can... Any changes that you want to make to the text. If there's substantial changes, I would have to go back out to notify the public again. But there... We'll see where you go with it. And I can say whether we can leave it like it is, leave the advertising like it is.
And Carrie, at this point, you're talking about the banners, not anything flashing?
No.
This is just banners?
Just the banners that are on the fence. And off-premise advertising is defined as something that advertises a use that is not at that site. A billboard is a classic example of off-premise signage.
Any questions for staff?
Do you have any devil's advocate suggestions where this might be a negative to some other use? That's the thing that would be most relevant, if you can think of a way this could be abused.
I have a reservation with just being able to face the road... I mean, just to face the field.
Okay.
McMichael's a case point. Their parking lot, where you walk up to the field, people could see those banners walking through the field.
And that helps to...
But it also faces the road, but it's at a distance.
I see.
Yeah.
It's quite a distance.
Quite a distance. But they can be caught on that just because it's facing the road.
Well, the term oriented, I can make that stronger and write that are there just to be oriented to the road. So what you're talking about is something that can be seen from the road but wasn't intended to be. Correct?
Correct. I wouldn't see a problem with facing the parking lot for people coming to see the game.
Okay. So I need to word it differently that is not intended for passersby to read advertisements.
Or what if we were to say that if the ballfield was located beyond a certain distance from the road, that this wouldn't apply?
That's really difficult to catch to...
That would get subjective.
Very subjective, yeah. I'd rather talk about what you want it to do or not do and work that in. And then on a case-by-case basis, we can say, no, that's too close or that's too... And it's really... It's basically if the sign is put up, if they're using this, the fence, to... For off-premise advertising that otherwise is not allowed in the residential district. McMichael probably is in the office institutional district, by the way. This is in the residential districts so as not to change the character of the residential district. So residential districts don't expect for off-premise signs to be located along the road. So maybe that's a little stricter, but again, it only applies in residential districts. Does that change the feelings about it, maybe?
No, I don't believe it. McMichael would be in a residential district?
No.
Yeah, it's interesting. Some schools and churches will come along and rezone to office institutional and follow those setbacks and signage and other standards. In other cases where it's not necessary to zone, and nobody pointed out the fact that, hey, if you don't rezone, you're going to be subject to residential standards. Because these uses are allowed in a residential district. They don't require zoning.
I have a question.
Yeah.
In placing these signs on the fence at these ballfields, I'm sure it's going to help the merchants who put the signs on the field. Is it in association with the person that puts the sign up in the school as far as saying, you know, for so much contribution?
That's what the banners do. They actually advertise them as fundraising opportunities and reach out to businesses to advertise in this way for a fee to help the service or whatever service the school is providing. It's typically a sports program or a... It's typically a sports program because it's on the ballfield.
It's typically the athletic boosters.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know, the thing about that, that being associated with the signs merchants in the school, what... I was wondering about what ruling the county had in relation to those signs in association with the school.
So whether we even have the right to say one way or the other. I can run that deeper by the attorney and see if that's going to be an issue.
Because, you know, it's not in the right of way. That's what I was thinking about.
Right. And signage can't be in the right of way at any rate. So what does the rest of the board... How does the rest of the board feel about that?
And you're just saying just in residential. It doesn't mean that a school could not do that. It's just if it's in a residentially-zoned district, it's not permitted.
And if you understand the school that is on Highway 158 that hasn't been there very long, and there is the ballfield fence actually is somewhat close to the road. And it's my feeling that having signs on there pointed to the road, while they are good, well-intended, could really have an effect on the character of that area rather than just seeing a plain backside of a banner.
And you're okay with those being turned towards the parking lot once you enter in?
Yes, yes. So it's just... And it says not oriented to the road, and that is very different than the parking lot. In the vernacular of an ordinance, the road, and I could even say roadway. Perhaps that would be even more specific, so it doesn't prohibit parking lot.
And if the two are the same, then you're just going to have to...
Well, I would say that with this amendment, that hopefully myself and anyone who follows will be... will really be careful and look at every situation to ensure that...
Okay.
Yeah. That's what we're supposed to do, is envision what something might look like in the future. So if you do... If you're in agreement to change the word road to roadway to better differentiate it from a parking lot, if whoever... When and if you're ready to make a motion, if you would please include that in the motion. And once you've opened and closed the hearing, of course.
I move that we approve the...
Paul, can you... Do you need to hold a hearing?
I'm sorry?
You do need to hold a public hearing and see...
Oh, we do?
Yeah. You just need to open and close and state and make sure that nobody wanted to speak that hasn't signed up.
Okay.
So we need to go into our adjustment?
No, no, not for board of adjustment. And you know what? I think I'm wrong. I'm off about that. You don't need to hold the hearing. You don't need to hold a hearing, but you can call... You can hear from the public if you'd like to, like you typically do. I think that's why I...
Is there anyone here who would like to speak to the matter at hand regarding the way that signs are posted in residential rural areas? There being no takers, I move that we approve the amended Section 12.6 with the included language in Section C that we change off-premises advertising oriented to the road to roadway. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll say.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like signs. The change is to Section 12.6 of the Unified Development Ordinance passes unanimously. Now, this will go to the commissioners.
The board of commissioners will conduct a formal public hearing for this text amendment at their meeting on... Is it the 30th? No, the 21st, actually. We were able to advertise for this meeting and for the board of commissioners' meeting at the same time so as not to hold it up. They'll actually hear it on the 21st.
I saw that in the paper.
Yeah, yeah.
Not surprised.
It's actually when it comes within the window, that's a question I probably would pose to the board of commissioners, if something comes within the window or if they'd rather not hear something until the following month. I can stay if you want me to.
Well, you might as well stay right there, Carrie. The next item on the agenda is case number 2019-024 regarding a special use permit to allow a kennel with more than eight domesticated animals.
Our ordinance... And I don't know if any of you were around when the ordinance was revised to differentiate between small and large kennels. My couple of you weren't, yeah. So we established those standards to differentiate between small and large. The less than eight domestic animals is actually allowable to be approved by staff. More than eight domestic animals is subject to a special use permit in order to ensure that that use isn't having an ill effect on the surrounding neighborhood. A kennel is allowed with a special use permit in this zoning district. The applicant has asked... The acreage is just about six acres. The development standards are in your packet. They're basically eight animals, and every additional animal has to have... Every two animals have to have an additional acre. And so that is how I calculated that the maximum, based on this acreage, the maximum number of animals that this applicant would be able to have would be 40. Remember that you're in a special use permit, and you can propose conditions that are relevant to the case and to what you hear. The property and surrounded properties... Surrounded properties are zone residential mixed. I've given you a list of those uses that are permitted by right as of right now. The property is located... I brought the land use plan into play because your land use plan really should affect any decision that you make. It's not just a zoning decision. You can also inform a decision about a special use permit based on the land use plan. This is located in the land class identified as rural, where low to moderate density development is grouped in existing neighborhoods and cross-road community settlements, and where it will occur in similar neighborhoods and settlements during the following 20-year period and which may require extensive public services now or in the future. Characteristics of this land class are where residential development is grouped in existing neighborhoods and cross-road community settlements, and where it will occur in similar neighborhoods and settlements during the following 20-year period. Lands with limited commercial development on an emphasis on mixed use. So again, there's several factors to consider this as well as the fact that a kennel is allowed in this zoning district provided a special use permit is satisfied. The applicant has submitted a site plan that does meet the development standards that we've required. When this case is married to that site plan and has to... Should the request be approved, the applicant would have to obtain any future permits for individual buildings. And any buildings that are either too close to the property line because of the setback requirements for a kennel, for instance, would have to be moved. Any buildings that are not in conformance of the building code would have to be removed or upgraded. So this is the... We're not hearing whether the facilities themselves are adequate. We're hearing whether or not a kennel is appropriate for that property and according to the site plan that's been submitted. A kennel is operated there right now is why I mentioned that. So this applicant has decided that she wants to continue the use and permit it properly.
Hold on. Could you just repeat that, please?
The kennel is already in existence without... It's in a non-conforming situation. So the applicant wishes to continue the kennel by getting the appropriate permitting that she doesn't now have. And that's usually a choice when someone comes into the office. If there's a use that's in violation or non-conforming, they always have a choice to bring it into conformance by getting proper permitting, proper building permits, whatever it is, if it's appropriate. So this is that chance. Remember that in order to grant a special use permit, you have to make each and all of four findings that are listed there in your staff report. "The use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or promote public health, safety, and welfare. The use complies with all required regulations and standards of this ordinance and with all other applicable regulations. The use is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or enhance the value of contiguous property or that the use or development is a public necessity." I don't think that's in this case. "And that the use conforms with the general plans for the land use and development of Rockingham County as embodied in the ordinance." This chapter is just a section of the UDO and in the Rockingham County Development Guide. So this is a special use permit, so your hearing will be based on competent material and substantial evidence in the record to support these conclusions from both those proposing the use and in support of the use or in opposition to the use.
Any questions for staff?
How many animals are currently on the site now?
That's a more appropriate question for the property owner, for the applicant. But I believe there's 10 or... No, that many? Fewer than... Oh, okay. More than that. Okay. More than 10 or 20? Okay. I think that... Ben, what is the number of animals in there? Do you know? Okay, about 22. But again, you're looking at the use itself and whether it would be appropriate up to 40 animals.
And may I ask how it came to your attention when the applicant just come in?
I believe it came to the intention of the code enforcement officer through a neighbor complaint.
Any other questions for staff? If not, all persons who have signed up to speak, would you please come forward and be sworn in? All right, there's bibles on the railing here. Put your left hand on the bible and raise your right hand. "Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?" Okay, please be seated. Teresa Summers. For the record, please state your name and address.
Teresa Summers, 200 Happy Homeschool Road, Ruffin, North Carolina.
Okay, you're the applicant for this special use permit. What would you like the planning board to know?
Before I lock this property... Before I bought this property, I had mentioned something to the county at one point about would this be a good piece of property, maybe to place a kennel on at a later date. They said that it should be good. It had plenty of surrounding trees and stuff that should help muffle sound. I also, once, I was out of town when it happened, when a complaint was made. I was in Washington State. My daughter was pregnant, and she was having problems, so I'm not sure what had happened. But somebody had made a complaint while I was out of town, and I spoke to Ben on the phone, I think it was Ben, when they called. And then, I came straight down here and talked to Carrie once I got back into town, and I've complied with everything they've asked me to do. So, I did want to build a kennel, but I didn't know when I would want to build the kennel. So, since all this had happened, I started talking to an architect about drawing up a plan for a kennel. I have a friend that has a kennel, and I have a picture. It won't be like just a small building, it would be like a really nice structure built. It would be in the center of the property. I own the acreage that's shown on the screen a while ago. Also, my mom owns a bunch of the surrounding acreage, which she's fixing to transfer over to my name. So, the acreage that's going to be transferred over to my name from my mom, she's going to transfer it sometime this month. It'd be one, two, three, those four acres back there, that two-acre lot, and that's behind the red, that's my property, and then the yellow beside the red to the left, that will also be included. And so, that whole amount of acreage will be my property by the end of the month. So, I have like a lot of land there, and it should be suitable for a kennel. Like I said, I don't mind paying to have a building built, like a really nice building that has soundproof barrier in it for the dogs. I was planning to do that anyway, but this just kind of like moved the process along a little bit quicker. I had went to, when I first moved to that property, I had went to several of the neighbors, and trying to be a good neighbor, I let them know, you know, I do have dogs, I do breed them. If you ever hear them barking, please come let me know, I'll do my best to keep them quiet. I do keep shock collars on them at times, but you can't put the shock collars on them for over a 24-hour period, or it could burn their necks. So, I have to rotate the collars around. I also go out there and try to get them quiet. They do get a little noisy when you first go out to feed them, when they see you, they're happy to see you. So, they do make a little bit of noise then. Somebody has been back on my property in a side-by-side, and we do not want them there, and there's somebody back there riding four-wheelers. And that causes the dogs to bark more, sometimes to, sometimes a deer might come across, they might bark for a minute. The main barking, what I would say would be, is if you first go out there to feed them, they're really excited, they bark for a few minutes, then they stop. Or if the sirens goes off, dogs bark. There's also other dogs in the neighborhood that barks. There's somebody down the road that has some hunting dogs, because I can hear them barking in the morning sometimes when mine aren't even barking. I feel like the kennel could bring income to the community, because I sell puppies to people in all different states, and they come in usually a day before they'll fly in, and I usually tell them to stay at the Holiday Inn in Reedsville, and then the next morning they come out to my property and get their puppy, and then fly back to their state. So, it does kind of bring a little income into the county. Not a gigantic amount, but some amount. I know Rockingham County is a small county, so I guess everything can help. The kennel actually would prevent a lot of noise, because I could keep the dogs put up during certain hours and let them in and out. I think it's a really good idea. I think it would also add value to people's property, because most of that land would stay wooded, and you wouldn't have to worry about somebody coming in and developing it with houses.
Ms. Summers, how long have you been operating the kennel?
At Happy Home School Road?
Yes.
I moved there last December 21st.
So, about a year.
Yeah, and as soon as I found out that I needed a special use permit, I complied with everything that Carrie and Ben had asked me to do. So, I want to get it right, I don't, you know, and like I said, I moved forward with building the kennel. To build an actual kennel, it would probably cost me, probably the cheapest I could get one built for is probably $180,000. They're very expensive to build, they're not cheap. So, like I said, it would be a really nice structure. It wouldn't just be like a little bitty tin barn or something, it would be actual, a All of my dogs, I take very good care of them, they're health-tested, all of them have been health-tested, and I do the DNA health testing, I do the OFA health testing, pin hip. I take them to the vet regularly. I don't see any reason why with that amount of land, there couldn't be a kennel there. Like I said, it would really, if, I don't, the complaints that was made when I was in Washington State was noise during the daytime. With the kennel up, it would be like a soundproof barrier, plus I have all those trees around there, and I could even put up a fence to help muffle anything that might come out when the dogs do come out. Like I said, with the actual kennel, an actual kennel building, that would muffle almost, there would probably be like no noise at all, because they would be in their building, and they would be let out to exercise, use the bathroom.
What is the footprint of the kennel you're considering?
What is the what?
Footprint, the dimensions, floor dimensions.
Dimensions. So, I'm still working with that architecture about the building. It would probably be like, I can't remember what we was discussing.
50 by 80?
Probably 50 by 80, uh-huh.
And how many dogs would you propose to house in that kennel?
Probably about, I think they said that I could house up to 40 or something, but I wouldn't have that many. I'd probably have around 20, 25 dogs.
Any board members have questions for Ms. Summers?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious, what, you're just strictly breeding dogs?
What do you mean?
Are you just breeding dogs to sell?
I have pet dogs also, is that what you're asking?
Boarding, I think he's asking if you're also breeding.
Oh, I don't board dogs, no. I do not do any boarding or grooming, yes, breeding, correct.
And what kinds?
They're mainly Irish doodles, which is Irish setter cross with poodle. They're great family dogs. I have sold, a lot of my puppies have went to famous peoples. I just recently sold one to the starting pitcher for St. Louis Cardinals, Miles Nicolos. I don't know if any of y'all have heard of him.
That's fine, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Summers?
I have a question. On the lot boarding, you on the south side, where the 25-foot setback is concerned, that piece of property, that's not one of the ones you said were the, turned over in your name, or is...
So, the lots would be, that red lot is mine, and in between the blue lot, that's the church's lot, is the yellow lot, that's like a four-acre tract, that would be mine. The one up here that's on 700 and Schofield Road, that would be mine. And one, two, three, four, those five one-acre lots would also be mine.
So, that would increase, that would increase your buffer?
Yes, sir. And the only other thing that I, if I get the permit for the kennel, the only other thing that I would be doing on that property is, after I got the kennel built, and I would probably need a year or two for recuperation, that four-acre tract right there, I would clear off just enough room to build me a stick-built house on it. Probably about 2,500 to 3,000 square foot is what I would plan to build. So, it would be a really nice house. Because right now, I'm living on that red lot in a double wide.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So, with this increased acreage, once this is handed over to you, any plans in the future to expand on the kennel size or the amount of dogs?
No, sir.
She said earlier that you had roughly 20, 25 dogs now, and you just said a couple minutes ago that you would do 25 dogs max. Am I stating that right?
So, you're asking me, do I plan to get any more dogs?
Correct.
I think 25 is a good number, I don't think I need a whole lot. You know, 25 is great. Not all dogs cycle every time, you know, and then you have dogs that age out. So, 25 would give you like room to raise some up when you have these retiring out, because when I retire my females out, I don't just like get rid of them or take them to the shelter. I really investigate the families, really, and I even have taken them to the families to meet them. Like, I took one to Illinois, and that was Holly, and she went to an older couple, she was five and a half years old, and she went to an older couple in Illinois, and they messaged me all the time and let me know, you know, she's doing really good. I don't breed them till like, you know, their uterus falls out or anything, you know, I breed them, and then when I, I have a four-year-old right now, and I just, it's her last breeding. She had big litters, she's only had three litters, and she will be stayed, and I'll find her a pet home.
Thank you.
I'm able to clarify? I just wanted to clarify the lot she was just like saying that her mother owned.
Okay.
I've checked on the GIS, make sure this makes sense to you, that the parcels that your mother owns are the parcels in yellow that are in line with the red and to the south. The two larger ones that are north, those are in other ownership.
Yes, ma'am, you're correct.
So, it's those one-acre lots behind it, and the one next to the church, and the one that also borders Schofield Road and 700?
Yes, ma'am.
And ma'am, with the potential kennel, where is the proposed location that you're considering? Is it on your current parcel, or is it on your mother's?
So, it would be on the red lot in the center of it, and I felt like that would be a good place, because I felt like that would give the most buffer.
Possibly to the right, if you're placing your house, possibly to the right.
The center of the property would be north and left, like above and to the left of the residence, as it's listed on the site plan. Thank you, Carrie.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes.
This 25-foot setback, have you got, it looks like maybe a dog lot and a storage building's not in compliance. It's in the setback area, is that correct?
That's the one I told you you'd have to move.
Yeah, and Carrie told me about that when I spoke with her today and the other week, and I told her I can use that for my personal use, and she said that would be fine. Personal use as like storage overflow out of my house, we don't have much closet space.
It just, it wouldn't be covered under the special use permit. So, it could be, if she would have to move it in order to use it as an accessory to the kennel, or what she's saying, use it for personal use.
Even for personal use, it has to be moved?
No, well, is it, is it 15, is it within the 15-foot? It would have to be, okay, well, it may be, because if it's, in any case, if it's not being used for a kennel, it still has to be 15 feet from the property line.
Okay.
Is that 15 or 25?
25 for a kennel.
Okay.
That's why that's, there's difference, 15 for...
Okay, now, the one marked dog lots, 30 by 40 covered, is that a structure or a shelter, or what is that?
It's kind of like a lean-to that was already there, and I used it to keep like rain and snow off the dogs until I could actually get a kennel built for them.
So, basically, that's not in, that's not in compliance with the setback, is it?
Well, we, this is the first step. The next step is for the building code enforcement and our building, invest, building inspector to go out there and look. And then, the, as far as the treatment of the dogs themselves is regulated by others, we regulate the number in the buildings.
And I don't mind doing whatever it takes to get it in compliance, or...
But that is definitely something that we intend to address. If, and if the, if the permit is allowed, the structures still have to meet code, and if they don't now, they'll have to be improved in order to.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Summers at this time? All right, thank you, Ms. Summers. You're going to be given an opportunity for rebuttal after we hear from the people who have signed up to speak.
Okay, thank you for your time.
We'll be calling you back.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Atkins, if you would, before you begin, could you please state your name and address for the...
My name is Ronnie Atkins, I live at 6059 NC Highway 700, and I am here representing Happy Home Church. As indicated, I come representing the church. Our property joins the property, we would be the blue there on the map, the yellow directly north of it is a wooded lot, then her property there. The blue property there is actually the old Happy Home School property that the church owns. We have many activities that go on there at the church, the playground area. We have a lot of young people, the kids and so forth that are there. There's a playground on that property. So, our concern with this dog kennel is certainly the issue of safety, an issue of noise, an issue of odor. So, we'd like to address those concerns and so forth. Our church cemetery, which would be directly to the right of the road with the church property, the first little yellow block there, there's a cemetery there that's probably about 200 yards from this proposed site, and I'll, you know, address that in just a little bit later. When we talk about safety there with the school property and the playground and this type of thing, certainly loose dogs, and they have gotten loose because of one of the neighbors that's carrying the dogs back to that, her property, from what I understand. A loose dog would just show up there at that playground, I think would be very discerning to an individual. If you have children, it's going to scare them. I know I was at the property this summer, a couple of us sort of keep the school property mowed and so forth. The first time I heard these dogs, I thought it was a pack of wild dogs coming through the woods, that wooded lot in the yellow there. I can't run, but I moved pretty quickly to my truck in case there was an issue of these dogs coming. I had no idea it was a kennel there or whatever at that time, but it did kind of scare me, and I was concerned for my safety at that moment. So, I finally realized that these dogs were stationary, that they were not coming, but they was making, you know, a pretty good noise there. The community uses the playground, so the playground is constantly in use, especially in warm weather. So, it's not a matter of just church activities that that playground is used. So, at any time of the day, there's a possibility for young children and their parents to be on the playground there. The noise factor that we're concerned with, again, we have used this... The noise factor that we're concerned with, again, we have used this, this school property for outdoor activities, gospel singing in the past. We have some, uh, the shelter there, the shelter that's used by groups to have birthday parties and this type of thing. Again, it would actually be, you know, probably less than 100 yards, the shelter from that to the facilities that she plans to, to use there. Also, our cemetery there, on the west side of the cemetery, comes right into the road. If we were having a, if there's a funeral there, uh, especially with the graveside activities or graveside service, uh, these dogs, it would be, I think, very disruptive to the, to the family and the people there to have to listen to these dogs while the service was going on. If it was a military funeral and the firing of the weapons and the playing of the bugle, chances are it would probably upset these dogs some, and they would begin to, uh, to, uh, bark and, and so forth. Very distracting, I think, at that time. There's also an, uh, issue of odor, uh, with, uh, this dogs are set up to a potential of 40 dogs there, although she's indicated probably only be 25 there. Generating, I think, a lot of probably animal waste, it's got to be disposed of somehow or another. And no doubt, I think it would be an issue of flies from the kennel and these dogs and this type of thing there. Also concerned about the, the neighbors that live in the area, uh, I could see this causing some issues between neighbors, apparently with being reported, that it already says that there, there is an issue there. So if dogs are getting loose and going on to other properties, if they're barking at all hours of the day and night, I know that this would probably upset some issues. I know I would not like, would want to live beside a kennel with dogs that could bark at any hours of the day and, uh, and night. And again, it's not our intent to, to, you know, step on anybody's dream here, we just don't feel that this is an appropriate place for a dog kennel. And, uh, it is classified rural, but rural is getting more residential. Uh, there are homes nearby, and I think some of these people would definitely be concerned about these, these dogs in this, this area. In my closing, I would just, you know, simply ask, you know, do you think about this? As you think about it, ask yourself, would I want to live beside a dog kennel? Uh, so please consider that. I also have a petition here that was been signed by our, uh, church members and so forth here that I would submit for you to, to look at.
Do I hear a motion that we accept the petition?
I'm looking personally at the petition.
Second. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand.
Why don't you, um, give it a look before you accept it, just to be sure that it is...
Okay, well, it is evidence, whether it's good or bad evidence.
That's true, it, it just needs to be material and, and...
It's like our lawmakers. It's like our lawmakers, we elected them to make our laws, but we forgot to tell them they had to be good laws. Would you like to bring that forward, please? Or give it to Carrie? I, I have a question for you, sir. As I look at the colored map, this, this one here, uh, the cemetery is to the west of the blue...
It is to the east. Could I approach the map over here?
Oh, sure.
Can you, can you all see?
Yeah, I can see them from here.
This is our church property, the cemetery actually goes here and sort of wraps around the church, it's sort of located in this area, the cemetery's all wrapped around it. From this side of the cemetery and back through here, like I said, I haven't measured, but I was like, you're talking 200 yard it lives.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, are there any other questions for Mr. Atkins?
Yeah, I have a question. You know, occasion you made reference to when they have 20, 25 dogs. Well, I think right now, the, they already have 20 or 25 dogs. You made reference to odor. Have you experienced any odor?
I haven't, because I don't live in the area.
Were you thinking about...
Concerned down, down the road. See, you know, we didn't know until recently what was happening here. Uh, we didn't know how many dogs you're talking about, we hear her tonight speaking of 25 dogs, which she basically, you know, says she already, already had. I don't live in the area, I mean, I attend church there and this type of thing. I'm not, I cannot say that I have noticed any odor at this point in time.
I know you mentioned odor and flies, and, and you know, if it, if it didn't happen when the, the code enforcement made this visit, it shouldn't be happening if, if and when it's ever approved.
Well, you know, I don't know what her plans are for waste disposal and this type of thing. I know she mentioned turning the dogs out to use as a restroom and so forth, I don't know if there's a plan to, to clean that up, and you know, cumulative effect with time, uh, could become an issue, possibly.
Thank you.
One last question from, uh, the chair, Mr. Atkins. Is any part of the Happy Home Church property fenced?
There's partial fencing around the playground on two sides, so it is open from the other side. That's the only fencing that we have. And that fencing sort of borders the, the road itself and a driveway.
Any other questions for Mr. Atkins?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Kyle Hodges, please. And again, for the record, could you please state your name and address?
All right, it's, uh, Kyle Hodges, uh, 250 Happy Home School Road. That would be the, uh, yellow highlighted area directly beside of the red.
To the north of it?
Yes, yes, sir.
And what would you like the planning board to know, sir?
Um, we've stated earlier, the current residence, 200 Happy Home School Road, they've operated the facility for about a year now. Start with, it wasn't as bad. Over time, the dogs have increased, the noise has gotten worse. As far as the odor, the smell, stuff, I'd experience it most every day during this past summer with the dry weather. Depending on wind, wind shift, wind change, it has been terrible. It was bad. It ruined my daughter's birthday party this past year in October. Everybody was outside, we had about 30 guests, and wind shifted that way, and you could just see the disgusting people's faces. It was just crazy. The, the dogs bark just about constantly. You, if you can shut a car door, when I, if I get out of my car door to go in my house or anything, that just sets them off, it's constant. Um, like I said, um, I'm, I'm, I'm more or less fed up with the, the noise, the smell, that type of thing. I built a, um, a brand-new home in, uh, 2014, 2015, and at that time, 1,800 square foot house, full basement, very nice place. Um, we've lived there in that house for about five years or so. I've lived next door on a smaller piece of property. We've been there for, um, about 13 years. It's always been a very quiet neighborhood, um, no problems whatsoever with anybody. That's one of the reasons, it's one of the reasons I bought the place in the first place. It was, uh, it had some, I bought it from, uh, I bought it from my uncle. He had bought it from, it was a Cross Brothers estate. It was, um, they had some stipulations on it when I bought it. It was a house size, 1,300 square feet or bigger, um, you know, a lot of, um, I don't know if they're like zoning issues.
I believe they're called restrictive covenants.
Okay, restrictive covenants, okay. Um, you know, no junk cars, just, uh, trying to keep the place looking really, really nice, you know? I try to do my best by keeping my property up and, you know, make it really presentable. I, I've put a lot of money on my property, um, this past year, this past summer, we thought about putting in a swimming pool behind the property. You can't stay outside in the summer when the shit, the wind shifts that direction, it's, it's bad. Um, I don't know if that would get any better, I don't know what, you know, I don't know what you would do with it. I do have, I, I contacted, uh, Ben Curry with the, um, the code enforcement, um, on, let's see, three, like three different occasions, um, just to see how everything was going. And then he finally notified me that this was going, going to, um, a rezoning, a hearing where we're at now, you know, just to give them the option or the, the chance to, to hear their case. I do have, um, two petitions, one through, um, change.org, um, which was online. There was a lot of signatures from people that attended the party and stuff like that, and some of the neighbors. And I do have another one, um, we created, um, with some of the neighbors', um, signatures, um, and addresses, you know, we'd be interested in accepting those.
Do I hear a motion to accept the petitions?
I'm motion.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Okay, if you would give those, please, to Carrie Spencer.
May I ask what the, um, the change.org petition, how that read? Or is it the same?
It's the same.
What was it that people were, is there some narrative that they were signing?
Yes.
Not, not necessarily, it's one of the... Is that narrative possible?
We want to look at that petition. Uh, that one I don't think we can accept without the narrative.
You mean what you, when you motioned?
Yeah, is this the change dot, dot, dot org? All right, since the change.org petition, uh, gentleman doesn't include any narrative as to its intent, uh, I don't feel as though we can accept this as credible evidence. So we'll need a motion to, uh, deny the acceptance of the change.org petition.
I maybe we can accept.
Second. Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. That you can just pass back to Carrie. Sorry, but we can't accept the change.org petition without a narrative because it, it doesn't tell us what it, what it purports to be.
Okay, well, I didn't print out that sheet, it's, I've, I've had it, but that's my fault. I'm sorry.
I wish we could, but we can't. But we do have your other petition, and, and the narrative qualifies as, uh, credible, credible evidence as to what it purports to be.
The other, the other landowner there would be, uh, I think it's Gary French, he would be the next, next landowner beside of me. He owns the 14 acres right on the, the other block.
I see his name on your petition. Anything else you'd like us to know?
I think this is it.
Okay, well, thank you. Is Jerry Caposey here? Am I pronouncing your name correctly? Please state your name and address for the record.
Jerry Caposey, 6831 N.C. Highway 700. I'm on the corner of Schoolfield and 700.
And what is it that you'd like the planning board to know?
I just wanted to say that I do agree with Mr. Hodges, the noise, this past water house seven years ago. And for seven years, we came down every two to three months and sat on our porch, a beautiful front porch that wraps around, and we'd just sit there and relax because it was such a nice, quiet neighborhood, except for the road, which was no big deal. We haven't, I've moved down here permanently in June, and we haven't been able to use the front porch because the dog's noise was so incessant and loud. And I'm quite a distance from there. When I used to, when I'd come home from work at 10:30 at night, if I closed the door, the dogs go off, I guess because night, with the night, the sound travels much further or something, but all I know is that can't open the windows, couldn't open up the windows during night weather because of the noise. That's what I have to say.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Caposey? All right, thank you, ma'am. Of the remaining speakers, is your principal complaint all about the noise? Can we have a show of hands, how many of you? All right, we'll lump up together, noise and odor.
You still should give them an opportunity to say, I concur with...
Right, we will.
Okay, so I can call someone for sure.
In the interest of time, seeing if I needed to...
Yeah.
...establish a time limit. Okay, Mike Hatfield, are you here? If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mike Hatfield, I live at 170 Schoolfield Road, which is directly behind that property on Schoolfield Road. I also own the property that's behind mine, which is my mother's, she has her right, uh, lifetime rights to it, own like almost 13 acres there. I have been a firefighter for 30 years, and I've been diagnosed with firefighter sleep syndrome. These dogs bark constant, all night, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock in the morning, they wake me up. My bedroom's on the front side of the house, and I hear the dogs that wake me up. And, and we have a pool behind the house, and in the summertime, you can't enjoy it because of the odors, if the wind shifts that way, the smell comes all the way across there. It's just a noise. I got, spent about $4,000 on a screen and porch that I can't enjoy because of the, the noise is, is just aggravated as it can be, it's constant. She says they only go a couple hours, or every now and then, I've been out there around the house, three and four hours working on the house, and they never shut up, never shut up. You might get a quiet time once in a while, but it's constant that they bark all night. And like I said, all night, I take my dog, my own dog, out at night, and the dogs are barking. It's very seldom you hear them not barking. And like I said, when the, when the, when the wind shifts, it smells like a, a, um, cow farm because, you know, the...
I have a dog, I understand what it smells like.
Yeah, you know, I love dogs, don't get me wrong, I love dogs, I had dogs all my life. Matter of fact, I just had to put one down, I had 15 years, and I just got a new one, so I'm out all the time with it, and the dogs are barking constant. The noise is just aggravated as it can be. Like I said, it interrupts my sleep because I, I sleep very lightly because of my career, and I've just developed that, any noise wakes me up, and then they, they wake me up all hours of the night. I've never heard from her, she said she went around and talked to neighbors, I've never heard from her, I don't know anybody over here sitting with me that's heard from her. She hasn't talked to nobody. I called, game worn, finally got fed up with it, or the dog, excuse me, uh, what am I trying to say?
Control.
Yeah, code enforcement, I called them and asked them, you know, to check this out, and he went over and checked it out, and called me back, said she had some dogs from Burlington she was housing, 10 or 15 of those dogs. Uh, so she, she brings dogs in sometimes that she does not accountable for, and it just increases that noise. And it just gets louder and louder and louder.
Any questions for, uh, Mr. Hatfield? Okay, thank you, sir. Tom Fagel. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Tom Fagel. I live at 244 Schoolfield Road.
And what is it that you'd like the planning board to know?
Uh, I'll keep it short and sweet. Next door to Mike, uh, we moved from Indiana, 600 miles away, we bought 52 and a half acres. We had a house put up on it, beautiful area, it's God's country, nice and quiet area. And at the beginning, like as mentioned, it sounded like a pack of wild dogs when all this first started happening. My son and granddaughters were living with us at the time, and I kept my 45 loaded at the front, double out buck shotgun in the back, because I didn't know what it was. I figured there was a pack of wild dogs constantly running. Those dogs are extremely noxious, you cannot have any, any peace in the country with those dogs there because they just totally destroy the entire area by all their yapping and barking all hours of the night. And I'd just like to see, hopefully something be done to stop it. And I'd just like to see, hopefully, something be done to stop it. We put a lot of money into that land and property, and it's, it's being run.
Any questions for Mr. Fagel?
I just have one, Mr. Fagel. And this is extremely obvious question, but I just have to ask it. Are we sure these are the same dogs?
Absolutely.
I just thought I needed that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Frankie Williams. If you would, please state.
My name is Frankie Williams, and I live at ten-sixteen Sherwood Drive, Greensville, North Carolina. But I have property that is, uh, close to where this kennel is to be built. I want to say that, uh, I am the daughter of John Cross, and it was his property that after my mother died was divided up. And it was sold for, hopefully, for homes, nice homes and all to be built in the neighborhood. In fact, there was some restrictions, uh, put on the property. One of them being that there couldn't be, like, a mobile home park or something of that nature. Most of the people in that neighborhood have always gotten along, it's, it's just been a good community. And I believe the neighbors, when they say that these dogs have really disturbed the neighborhood. And I think, as far as my property is concerned, if this kennel is built and this area is still bothered, then when I get ready to sell my property, they're gonna say, we don't wanna build here a noisy kennel, uh, of maybe twenty-five to thirty dollars. And she says maybe just twenty-five dollars. But, who's to say that once she gets this permit, that there may be thirty or more dogs at different times? So, that's the main thing I wanted to say, was I am concerned about the neighborhood. And I do believe that the people that live there are good, honest people, and that they have been very much disturbed by these dogs. Thank you.
Hold on, any questions for Ms. Williams?
No, she's not.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. McBride. If you would, for the record, please state your name and address.
Bruce McBride, six-nine-nine-five NC Highway seven hundred. I'm not only a resident, but also the pastor of Happy Home Church, and I concur with Ronnie Atkins and Frankie as well. So, no need for me to really explain any more things in regards to the funeral. I also own a dog. My first dog that was there for twelve years was attacked by two other dogs going down the street, had to put it asleep. I've had pigs, cats, dogs come through there, stray, all sorts of things. Not saying that will happen with these dogs, not sure what will happen in the future, but just saying I concur with Ronnie Atkins, who's also a member of Happy Home Church.
Any questions for, uh, Pastor McBride? Thank you, sir.
I have a question. Have you yourself, um, while you were at the church, have you witnessed the noise?
Oh, yes, constantly, yes, and taking care of funerals as well, and so it was a major concern also. Just, um, I remember coming through, matter of fact, I got five children, uh, three teenagers and two younger ones under teenage. One's actually eleven months, and we just over there today, had him over there in swings and everything. Didn't hear any noise, but, you know, you'll, I hear about three times a day, something like that. It varies. That's about it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Sommers, we're gonna call you back for an opportunity for rebuttal at this time.
Um, so a few things that I would like to address is, I'm also a God-fearing person, that is a good person. Um, I have no reason to lie, I think I do need a kennel that would stop a lot of noise. Um, as the last gentleman said, um, maybe three times a day, they might go off a little bit. Um, they get really noisy when they first see you, when you're going to feed them. As far as Mr. Hodges, um, I have talked to him and his wife before, and they just talk a lot of crap about people to me. And I told them that if you have any problems with my dogs, please contact me first and foremost, and I will try to fix it. I've never heard anything out of them until today. Ben came out to my property when all this happened, when I was at Washington State and stuff. And he didn't smell anything, so I don't know how this wind is shifting and going almost two acres over, and he's smelling something. Um, I just don't see that being possible. I didn't even know Ben was coming out when he came out. It was like a surprise visit. Kennels have, when the preacher says he's concerned about smell, flies, and stuff like that, kennels have septic systems in them. Your, um, waste goes to your septic system, so that is how you dispose of it. Um, some of the harder poop, though, you would dispose of it a different way. Um, you can bag it up and take it out. Um, you can use in-ground things that neutralizes the poop, so there's no smell, it's down in the ground. And it just breaks it down, basically like a septic system. Uh, but kennels do have septic systems, and that's why when you go to a kennel or a vet, you, you don't smell it because they have the septic system. I talked with, I spoke with the people at two-forty-four Schoolfield Road before, and also told them that if there was any noise, if my dogs caused any problems, please let me know. I told them where I lived, never heard anything from them. The smell that, that one guy said smelled like farm animals, it could be coming from there, two-forty-four Schoolfield Road. They have two great pyrenees over there that bark every time you go down the road, they chase your car down the fence line. They've got, I don't know how many goats, they've got some kind of goat breeding going on over there. So, the farm smell they smell could be coming from two-forty-four. Um, I do not see how it could travel, a smell could travel over two acres or more when Ben was out there, and he was right at it, and he really didn't smell anything. I have no aggressive breed dogs, I would not keep an aggressive breed dog. Um, I had a dog escape one time, and the Hodges, it was over there, I immediately went and got the dog. Um, their kids picked them up, said, oh, we love these dogs, we love these dogs. And, um, they're not aggressive, I took them back home. That's the only time that they had escaped. Um, none of my dogs bite. I have a four-year-old grandson that lives with me, I cannot have aggressive breeds around him. My son is twelve years old, he's very small for twelve. I cannot have aggressive breeds around my children or grandchildren. My dogs don't run at large. Anybody's dogs could, the preacher said that my dogs could get loose and go up to the church. Anybody's dogs could go up to that playground and attack the child. Um, I keep my dogs contained, I pay a lot of money for my dogs. Some of my dogs I paid up to thirty-five hundred dollars for, I do not want them running loose at all. The graveyard is actually farther than two hundred feet away from my house.
No, he said two hundred yards.
Uh, two hundred yards, it's farther than two hundred yards. I'm sorry about that, sir. Um, it's farther than two hundred yards, and where the kennel would be sitting, it would be that farther than that, because it would be actually in the center of the property. And like I said, loose dogs can come from anywhere, um, there is no safety issue. Um, as he stated, the dogs are contained. Um, the preacher stated that he heard them, but he never seen them because they have, they are contained, they do not get loose. I make sure, I go around and check their lots, make sure there's no loose spots. Like I said, I pay too much money for them dogs for them to be getting gone. You'd be surprised what people pay for dogs. Let's see. The, the preacher said he was worried about that they might have an activity up at the playground, like a singing or, um, a picnic or something. So, he is more than welcome to call me and say, hey, we're gonna have a singing this week, can you please make sure your dogs are put up and there's no noise during these hours? I would be more than happy to oblige him. Um, if I had the actual kennel, it would be even better because they wouldn't hear a thing. But, you know, I try to be respectful and talk to the neighbors about this, and I'm really kind of hurt because I tried to be a good neighbor and go to them, and then they just caused a big uproar. And I'm sorry if anybody is hurt or offended by it. As the, one lady that sold that property to my mom stated she would like houses put on the property. Um, I prefer to have my kennel there and to build my house later on there. But, if for any reason it doesn't work out, um, I got plenty of property I can build, ever how many houses I can build on it and rent them out, it doesn't matter, I prefer to have my kennel, though. And that property is on, it's, it's owned, then you can't put a manufactured home on it or a stick-built home. And thirteen hundred square foot is, I think, the minimum of a size of a home that can be put on that. And the preacher also stated he had no idea how many dogs I had. Um, so therefore, they must have not been too much of a nuisance. Um, nobody really came and complained except for maybe the Hodges and that other family that called. But the church never called and complained on me or anything until this, this meeting was brought about. Um, and there's at least two acres, like I said, between me and the Hodges, um, it's a good distance. There's, um, people constantly going in my woods, riding four-wheelers, riding the side-by-sides, that needs to stop because that does make my dogs bark. Oh, and so when the animal control came out, and I spoke with animal control, because I had to give him all of my dog rabies and stuff. And he said, he sat at that church, is what he told me. He sat at that church for several days till he could find where the dogs were. Because they had called about the barking, and he had sat up there, and he told me it took him several days to find out where the- I mean, I'm not saying they don't ever bark, they are dogs, dogs are gonna bark, that's what you need a kennel for. And like I said, you know, I can build, I, I prefer to have my kennel and then build my home on that four-acre lot. But I have, what, five, five lots there, four acres there, six there, uh, four right there. I mean, I prefer my kennel, but if I have to go a different route, which I don't want to, I'd really like for my kennel to be approved.
Okay, I have a couple more questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Do your plans for this kennel include any kind of perimeter fence? Or, or is there any kind of fencing at all that you intend for your property?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, I'd like to put some kind of nice fencing around the property, I've had different ideas going through my head. Um, I'd eventually like to put up a cinder block wall for the barrier between me and the Hodges. And then, you know, because I think that was, that was also a barrier, like a cinder block wall, I don't know how much that would cost. I could definitely do a wood fence, um, I know how much that costs. I don't know how much it would cost to get somebody to go through there with a six-foot cinder block fence. Um, when you build an actual kennel, you get industrial strength wire for your, um, dog lots. Um, so it's not like the wire that you might would have for your dogs, um, it's a heavier strength, there's no way they can come out of it. Um, I leased a kennel one time for two years, and it's a whole, it's a whole different type of wire, it's really thick. And I would even be willing to, like, say, say if this is, say if this is the kennel, and this is where the outdoor area is, I wouldn't even mind, you know, having that in the chain link fence and then going around that with a wood fence. Since, you know, the preacher's concerned that they would go up to the church and attack a kid. But, I'm telling you, those dogs are, I will not have an aggressive dog.
And also, could you offer some explanation for why these people are complaining about your dogs barking at two and three o'clock in the morning?
Uh, the dogs do bark sometimes. There was somebody going up and down the road in the middle of the night, um, a while back on a four-wheeler. They wasn't barking that night, but I'm telling you, there's somebody that's out in those woods that, um, I'm putting up cameras, and if I get them on tape, they will be prosecuted. They need to stay out of those woods. Um, they're back there doing, I, I don't know if they're hunting, I don't know what they're doing back there. But all I know, they could be dropping dead bodies back there, you know? I don't know what goes on back in those woods, I don't really go back there, um, because the ticks are really bad in the woods. I would like to bring one more thing that the preacher said about, he was concerned about my dogs would go up there and bite a child. The thing about my dogs don't get loose, and when, my dogs ran loose that time and went to the Hodges, and I went over there to get it, they had two labs, one of them did try to bite me, and those dogs are never on a leash, they run loose. And one of them did try to bite me, and she said it was aggressive. So, I don't know why it's okay for hers to be aggressive, but mine aren't even aggressive.
And the last question I have for you in regards to the intrusions on your property that are causing the dogs to bark. Have you made a good faith effort to contact the sheriff's department or complain?
Uh, I was speaking to Carrie about that this morning, sir. I didn't know what to do, actually, I was trying, the people on the side-by-side, I'm not sure who it is, I think I know who it is in here. I tried to stop them back in the summer, uh, me and the gentleman I'm sitting back there with, we tried to stop them, and they just bolted. Like, they didn't even wanna talk to us, they just seen us turn their head, and they just bolted. And I will be going to the police department tomorrow to get, um, posted signs, and I'm putting up cameras, so if I catch anybody back out there, they're gonna be prosecuted.
Are there any, uh, other questions for Ms. Sommers?
I have one for Ms. Spencer.
Carrie?
If she had seven dogs, would she need this permit?
Um, she would still need a permit, but we would be able to approve it on a staff level.
Yeah.
Without the, um, without hearing special use permit.
Any other?
Sure. In an attempt to get the special use permit, all these things have come to head about the pros and cons, problems related to the dogs. Uh, and I believe you said you've been living this location for about a year?
Yes, sir.
At that time, you were considering a kennel, right?
Yes, sir.
Well, my question is, why wasn't, why didn't you take all those things in consideration then?
I didn't know I needed a special use permit until back in the summer. And I've done everything I could to comply, you can ask Carrie, I've done everything they've asked me to do.
Not even, uh, question your own self about the number of dogs you had, whether it's too many, not enough, or have I gone over the limit, or?
Sometimes I have less than that amount.
I'm talking about twelve months ago?
Twelve months ago? I didn't have that many dogs twelve months ago. When I moved there, I had maybe twelve. Uh, what's happening is a lot of them are aging up, where they'll be retired. And so I had to get younger ones to replace those older ones. And that's how you have, like, sometimes you have a high number, and then sometimes it's a lower number.
Well, I understand that, but I was just wondering about, you know, twelve months ago, if you were concerned about, now, do I have to meet any requirements for a kennel? Whether it's six dogs, ten dogs, twenty dogs, or whatever? About inquiring about it, if you did or didn't?
Yes, sir, and I spoke to a man also before that, at the, um, place Carrie works at, the planning board place, remember that man that was there?
It might have been, uh, Mr. Cochran, Lynn Cochran, the other planner?
I think so, yeah. And, um, and I had talked to him even before about that property, but I did not know, it was never brought up, I needed a special use permit. I didn't know I needed a special use permit. I thought it was once I got the kennel built, like the kennel building, built, is when I needed the permit. Once I found out different, I've done everything in my power to do what I needed to do. I've been more than, um, you know, compliant with Carrie and Ben.
I'd like to ask, I don't, I don't know if I ever asked you, Teresa, were you breeding dogs before you moved to this property, and where was that?
Um, I had a few dogs, uh, before I moved to that property. I had a few dogs before I moved to that property. I've always bred dogs on and off my whole entire life. So yes, I had dogs before I moved, but it's like, when I bought that property and I knew it would be a good place for a kennel, and that's when I decided to move forward with more numbers. And like I said, right now, it's at a time where I have a bunch of dogs that are going to retire, so I had to get puppies so they'd be old enough to breed once I retired the females. Like, I just retired three females, like, within the past three months, three females left. And so, and then my puppies are still not old enough to breed, but they're getting closer to it. They're like a year old.
Sure, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
As far as the domestic animals, so would it be any different if we're not talking about dogs, if we're talking about cow or?
If we were talking about, if we were talking about livestock, livestock, it would be more related to agricultural ordinances. And in this agriculture, in this residential mixed zone, it may very well be that livestock is allowed. We differentiate between livestock, domesticated animals, and wild animals in our nuisances because of the way they behave and have impact on surrounding properties. So it is, it is different.
For the livestock?
Right, that's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions as well.
Sure.
What, with these dogs that you have currently, what help do you have in taking care of them?
My 30-year-old son was there with me. I also get, I pay somebody to come over sometimes to help. I've paid, I paid, I had three people back over the summer and they would come do different types of jobs, like shoveling rocks for their lots, putting up electrical fences, helping me lay floor down in the building, just different things.
All right, thank you. And you indicated earlier that you were willing to adjust your needs to the neighbors. For instance, if there was some special event going on at the church, you'd be willing to do something different with the dogs, maybe bring them all inside?
Yes, sir.
To help out with that?
Yes, sir.
And I know from, I've seen a couple of kennels in the county in the last few years and I know one in particular who has about 20 dogs or so and he has a septic system built into his, his home. But in all honesty, with that many dogs, there's still a smell around his, his nice kennel because he's put some money into it as well and there's still a substantial amount of smell there as well. So I just wonder with, with the buffer that you have currently, is there any other plans to do something different, even if you have to work with the neighbors for some other ideas?
Yes, I'm willing to be open to ideas. Me and Carrie was talking about some things this morning, like, somebody said, "Well, I go about the wood fence or some type of fence to put between the kennel and maybe the other property or around the actual fencing of the kennel."
Right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
I just make one more statement for everybody, really. I'm very landright oriented. I realize that everybody's rights to own land and do what you want to is important. But with that said, there has been a substantial amount of folks tonight who had an issue with, obviously, you know, what you're trying to do. My worry is that with purchasing more land, in all honesty, I would have a concern that there's a potential of putting more dogs there, which would also increase, you know, the problem.
So like I said, the four-acre tract is where I would want to build my house. I have a 30-year-old and a 22-year-old. My 22-year-old lives in Washington State. She's planning to move back. The only other thing I might do with that property is put a trailer or a house on it for her. My oldest son, he can stay where I live. I do really hope that I get approved for the kennel. If not, I don't know if I can appeal it. And then, like I said, if I keep going forward with the kennel and I never get it, then I just can't let that land sit there and do nothing with it. I have to eventually do something with it. I can't just pay tax on empty land.
That's true.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
To answer a question of yours, if, regarding appeal, everything that takes place tonight with this planning board is subject to approval by the Rockingham County Commissioners?
This, not, not this case, I'm sorry. This is a, your decision is final for a kennel of this nature.
Oh, okay.
That's okay, Paul.
Can it be appealed, Carrie, if it goes against me?
There is an appeal process.
Okay.
Yeah, that we can, that we can talk about it. And you'd be actually appealing it to this group as a board of adjustment.
Okay. And, you know, like I said, I really do hope y'all approve the kennel. I really would be, like, compliant, like, with the church, helping them out. If not, like I said, I would just have to go a different avenue and put rental properties on those lots or something. I don't know what I'll do with them yet.
I just, I just wanted to, a gentleman was asking if he could make a statement. I don't know if he could accept that or not, he didn't sign up and I think that perhaps if the property owner had another chance to rebut or something, I don't, I'm not sure how to, how to address the request, but a gentleman has asked if there's a way for him to speak.
Well, that'll mean we're going to have to call her back for rebuttal again. I'm inclined to.
I don't think it's necessary, Mr. Chairman. Personally, I think we've heard enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to.
You had a question for me?
I would like, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, my question is, we've heard possible plans of what may, you know, keep going and addressing this concern. When we're, when we're voting on this and making a decision, can restrictions be made for certain things? Basically?
You can, you can impose, you can impose conditions on a special use permit to be careful to keep them in line with this for, let me go back, amend my staff report on the first page, with the four findings, basically, that you, that you have to make.
Carrie, what I wanted to mention was, I think Ms. Summers or I, one of the two of us, misunderstand what we're doing here tonight. I'm deciding on whether she can continue doing what she's doing, period. Not can you do it once you build a nice kennel. The nice kennel is not really something for us to determine right now because you don't have it. I think we might be in a, I might be in a better situation if you had built the kennel and then come for the permit, but you would have had to put a lot of money out there, I know that.
Yeah.
But that's where we're at. And I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, whenever you want.
Okay. Before we get to that, Mike, is there any other questions for Ms. Summers? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your consideration.
Okay.
To your, to your point, I would say, too, that, thank you, Teresa. In order to put such a condition, like you have one and if you get a kennel, you still really need to see an accompanying site plan for that and I agree with you that it would be a different case.
Could she come back with that and ask again?
Yeah, and I would be sure, for her sake and to, for her benefit, when you, when you make your findings, if that's part of it, to make that known so that she understands what it is that you found, so she has the opportunity to do something different.
Well, if there are no other discussion, the motion, sir.
Or anyone else that would want to?
Or anyone?
Are we going to hear the other gentleman? We're done.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we deny the special use permit in case As described in the applicant submission materials and subject to further conditions as may be described herein, the proposed use does not meet the requirements of Chapter 2, Article 9, Section 9.6 of the Rockingham County Unified Development Ordinance, and the use or development is not located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. The use or development does not comply with all required regulations and standards of the Rockingham County Unified Development Ordinance and with all other applicable regulations. The use or development is not located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or enhance the value of contiguous property, or that the use or development is a public I think that it does conform to the general land use. That would be my motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second the motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor of denying the special use permit, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed? The permit is unanimously denied.
Can I make a statement? Can I, is that okay to do even after it's, or is it?
Yes.
Is that okay? You know, I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm a big believer in farms and like you said, you know, personal property ownership rights and many of the animals and things like that, but I do see that it's a pretty big problem for the neighbors and I know that sitting outside the homes and hearing constant barking, and I'm also a realtor and so I do know that it can greatly affect the property values directly aside. But I do believe that there were some steps that could be made to, that you've got some data to support that and show it coming back, I think it's worth doing, but I think you have to have some details to keep the community, you know, with the noise concern. I think that sounds like the biggest issue. Sounds like you could probably keep it safe. I'm not really concerned by that from what you said, but it sounds like it really is a noise hindrance for all the neighbors and the livelihoods of the community. And that's a rural community. I just want to make that point.
Where's my agenda? Is there any old business, Carrie?
None, except that is everybody getting their stipend now?
I'm sorry?
Is everybody getting their, their stipend?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't checked my.
No?
I haven't checked my.
It's a, there's a fee that you actually, or a pay that you get for being on the board? Probably because you just, for attending the meetings as to, okay. So, well, as many times as you've attended a meeting is what you should get, as, as a sitting board member, so get with us so we can help you out there. Okay, I just wanted to be sure that that had been settled. That's the only, that's the only thing I have.
How about new business? Any updates?
The land use plan consultant has been working over the holidays. I know because we've exchanged some communications. They're starting to do their stakeholder meetings. Philip is helping us set up a meeting of realtors for them to, to talk about. I think so. There's a lot, there's a whole bunch of them. They're going to be in town and they're going to speak to a, a group of realtors. They've got some good specific questions that they've asked them. They'll be speaking to the economic development, Citizens for Economic Development Board soon. They'll be talking to DOT. I'm going to try to attend all of these meetings if I can with them. So I feel like they're doing a good comprehensive look and interviews with, get a good feel for what's going on, similar to what was done before, but I feel like they're, they're being more comprehensive the way they're doing it. They're including more people.
Okay.
That's it.
If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Made and seconded, all in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Passy Dan of sleep. Meeting is adjourned.